Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Sarrow.
Hello.
Councilmember Dan Grous.
Here.
Councilmember Tana Sen.
Here.
And Councilmember-elect Benson Wong. Happy New Year and welcome to the January 6, 2014 Mercer Island City Council meeting. My name is Ally Speitz and I'm a city clerk for the city of Mercer Island. As city clerk, this is one of the unique opportunities that I have in chairing the first meeting of the year. Tonight, I will conduct the oaths of office to successful councilmember candidates as well as conduct the mayor and deputy mayor elections. Then I will turn the meeting over to the new mayor. In alphabetical order, I will call the successful candidates forward to take their oaths and sign their official documents and present them with their certificate of election. Please feel free to come forward to take photos, be mindful of the audience and the video cameras. After all the oaths of office and mayor and deputy mayor elections are over, we'll take a quick break for photo opportunities. So, Clara Maker, would you please come forward to do the oath of office for Councilmember Grous? Actually, why don't you come down forward here. Here, Dan, take the microphone.
You're gonna do a tango for us?
Interesting role reversal. So, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dan Grous.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of councilmember.
Of the office of councilmember.
Of the city of Mercer Island.
Of the city of Mercer Island.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
That the Constitution of the state of Washington.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
And the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I like this. The spouse could do the...
Well, we already did the swearing-in officially because you do have to have a certain person swear people in, so this is our ceremonial, but we're calling it official, for sure. Councilmember Sen, is your family coming up? Okay, if you guys wanna come forward.
I'm happy to welcome up my husband Kevin and my daughter Rachel and send them. Oh, this is mine.
That's yours. All right, ready? I state your name.
I, Tana Sen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office of councilmember.
Discharge the duties of office of councilmember.
Of the city of Mercer Island.
Of the city of Mercer Island.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
All right.
And our little Terry is coming up to swear in Councilmember-elect Benson Wong.
Okay, read slowly.
Please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Benson Wong.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of councilmember.
Of the office of councilmember.
Of the city of Mercer Island.
Of the city of Mercer Island.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my abilities.
And to the best of my abilities.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Welcome to the city council. Okay, so, under Washington state law, in the council manager form of city government, the councilmembers choose a mayor and deputy mayor from among themselves biannually at the first meeting. The election process is outlined in Section 6 of the Mercer Island City Council Rules of Procedure. So first, I will call nominations for mayor. If there's only one nominee, the election will be conducted by a voice vote. If there's more than one nominee, an open election will be conducted by roll-call vote. To be elected, the nominee needs a majority vote of the council, which is four votes. Following the election on mayor, I will do the same thing for the deputy mayor. So now, I will entertain a motion for nominations for a councilmember to serve as mayor for 2014 and 2015. Councilmember Brown, I would like to nominate Bruce Basset as mayor of the city of Mercer Island. Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Councilmember Basset, do you accept the nomination for mayor?
I was waiting for that survival moment where you get the, "Oh, my God." I can burn it off the island. Yes, I do.
All right, so there are no other nominations and the nominee accepts the nomination. All those in favor of Councilmember Basset serving as mayor for a two-year term, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mayor Basset.
Thank you.
Do you wanna be deputy mayor or you want me to do it?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, so now we'll move on to deputy mayor. So I'll entertain a motion for nominations for a councilmember to serve as deputy mayor for 2013 and 2015. Councilmember Brown?
I would like to nominate Dan Grous as deputy mayor of the city of Mercer Island.
Great, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Thank you for making this easy. There being no further nominations, Councilmember Grous, do you accept the nomination for deputy mayor?
I do.
Great. All those in favor of Councilmember Grous serving as deputy mayor for a two-year term, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. So, I will now turn the meeting over to Mayor Bruce Basset.
Are we doing any kind of...
Oh, did you wanna be sworn in? You did, yeah. Nope, nope, I, uh, I, well, I'll do it for you. Would you like someone else to swear you in?
Yeah.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Bruce Basset.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the city of Mercer Island.
Of the city of Mercer Island.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Round two. Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dan Grous.
I, Dan Grous.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of deputy mayor.
Of the office of deputy mayor.
Of the city of Mercer Island.
Of the city of Mercer Island.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
The Constitution of the state of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Welcome back.
Okay. Um, let's do Noel first. Um, are we doing Noel after we do Rich? I don't know. The scheduler says... That's the schedule. Okay, Rich, Noel, you're on hold. Let's stop to take pictures then. And, uh, I don't know, folks, how do we wanna do this? Did you have a... Ally, did you have a plan in mind for this part of it, or...
I don't. We could move through Riches and Noels and then stop and take photos, or we could stop now. It's up to you.
Let's do both of those and then stop, because that would be a logical stopping spot where there'd probably be a few photos of Rich to be had at the same time. So, let's do that. All right, so, uh, next item of special business is recognition of Rich Conrad's service to the city of Mercer Island, and for that, we have a resolution of acknowledgement and commendation for Rich Conrad's service to the citizens of Mercer Island, which I will now read. Whereas, Rich Conrad first joined the staff of the city of Mercer Island in 1979 and served its citizens dutifully for 35 years. In fact, I was in high school. Sorry, that's not in here. Whereas, Rich was appointed city manager in 1996 and held that role until his retirement in November 2013. Whereas, Rich became known for his ability to see a project through to completion, his encyclopedic knowledge of local history and politics, and his broad technical knowledge. Whereas, Rich brought a very personal and human form of leadership to city operations by strongly supporting his staff and trusting his management team. Whereas, Rich served as a coach and mentor for many generations of public service employees, took the time to eat his lunch with frontline employees, and frequently promoted capable staff from within. Whereas, Rich is widely respected among his peers and has served on the boards of numerous local, regional, and statewide organizations, including as president of the Washington City/County Management Association. Whereas, during Rich's leadership, the community of Mercer Island experienced an era of growth, vision, and careful planning, including a visionary planning process to revitalize his town center, transferred Luther Birdbank Park from King County to the city, financial support for the continued operation of Mary Waite Pool, construction of a new community center, starting a municipal court during the restructuring of the King County District Court system, developing a regional response to the reduction of jail services in the county, helping create a regional approach to E-911 communications and response, construction oversight of new park-and-ride lots for commuters. And whereas, the city of Mercer Island has also benefited from numerous improvements that Rich spearheaded, including the formation of the nationally recognized East City Government Alliance to share resources with 25 other member cities in areas such as personnel recruitment and construction permitting, and agreement securing a 60-year water supply for the island, oversight of the Shoreline Master Program update, the growth of a strong relationship with the Mercer Island School District, a solid partnership with the Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce. And then implementation of many measures to ensure, to enhance institutionalize and institutionalize environmental sustainability through city operations, such as participation in the Evergreen Fleet's Green Vehicle Initiative, advocating for the use of low-impact development techniques, installation of a solar array at the Mercer Island Community and Event Center, installation of electric vehicle charging stations at City Hall, the community center, and the Peak Boys and Girls Club, creation of a green revolving fund to provide loans to energy-saving efficiency initiatives, and hiring of the city's first-ever sustainability manager. Whereas, Rich has introduced humor to the often-dry policy arena and even been known to crack a joke during tense council meetings. Whereas, Rich has displayed his dedication by attending close to 400 of those meetings, even when a good Seahawk scheme was on television. Whereas, exhibiting tremendous patience, Rich coached several generations of mayors and dozens of councilmembers in how best to do their jobs, even as they told him how to do his. And whereas, Rich will likely be seen, be seen a little more down in Arizona perfecting his golf game and a little less, often in a suit and tie. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Mercer Island on behalf of its citizens, that the city council commends Rich Conrad for his 35 years of distinguished public service and extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for his leadership and countless contributions to life on Mercer Island, approved the 6th day of January 2014. You ready to give a speech?
All right, guys, ready to sit back?
And be civil.
Well, this is a little cool, to be honest.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, just hold on a second. That was purposeful.
Please, sir, stop.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you? Okay. So, I was thinking earlier today, you know, this is sort of the last time I get to talk to the council, and, um, so I got a haircut. So, you got it, you get a haircut out of me, but I decided you're not gonna go tie out of me, so, um, and that probably says a lot about life as it's gonna unfold. I was also thinking about the first time I presented to the city council in 1979, it might've been early 80. I was like 24-years-old, uh, of course, I knew it all. I knew everything, but I didn't know how to do anything. I, uh, I had told then-city manager Larry Rose that I would prepare a presentation to rent a closed elementary school and turn it into a community center with some federal money, and I had everything figured out. I talked to everybody possible, had this thing penciled out down to the penny, and I got up in front of the city council. And the council meetings then were in the school admin building, the biggest room that the community had for that kind of thing. And I got up to the mic and, you know, you could hear a pin drop, everybody was ready to hear this big presentation, and I just babbled. I just, I, I had, you know that, that effect when you start talking, you hear yourself about three seconds later, that tape delay, and I just... And I couldn't, I couldn't go on. So, I, uh, after a couple of minutes of that, I just said, "And now, take it away, Gary Floria, the parks director." And he's... You gotta be kidding. So, I learned the lesson that night, to be prepared, not only in your agenda bill, but to also have a few notes, so, um, I did, 35 years later, I still wrote up a couple of notes. Um, so, it's been, to me, it's been a great 35 years as Mercer Island city manager, 17 years as a city manager, 35 years as a city employee. It was never planned that way. In 1978, April and I moved to the West Coast on the two-year plan. My dad lived out here. We just got married. Let's go live with Dad. We don't have anything to lose, we don't have any money, we don't have any possessions. Two years later, went to, I got a job first at Kirkland, then I got a job at the city of Mercer Island, and the two-year plan became the 35-year plan. We never moved back. I landed a job with the city, spending and managing some federal community development block rent program dollars. The community center project happened. Later, a library project in annexation into the library district, that happened. The LID Park, wrote a grant, got some money, built a very unusual park. Things just sort of unfolded. Eventually, I discovered I was assistant city manager, and then in 1996, I was city manager. I was very lucky to have two terrific mentors. First, Larry Rose. Larry was the entrepreneur city manager. He figured things out and he created deals. So, we had land swaps with Farmers' New Rural Life, we had land swaps with the school district. We had, we traded things back and forth, could go on for hours, but that's what caused or ultimately set the stage for City Hall being right where it is today, and Mercer Dell Park being the treasured part in our town center, and farmers staying on the island. The other mentor was Paul Lansbury. In 96, Paul left and I became city manager, but during the time I was his assistant city manager, Paul was the master manager, the most skilled manager I've ever known in the public sector. And he totally rebuilt the city organization around values of customer service and skill and continuous improvement and efficiency, and I learned so much from Paul, and to this day, this organization still has the values that Paul instilled in all of us. We internalized that, and I'd like to think that I was able to carry on what he had taught me. I was also lucky to have a whole lot of great councils, for the most part motivated to serve the community by making good, community-based decisions. It's not a surprise, Mercer Island, just by nature of the community and the people that live here, tend to elect very talented, experienced people in their professional and their personal lives, and you all contribute that talent and your time to your community. You're not doing it for the money, you're not doing it for the prestige, you just, it's what you bring to the table. Not very many other communities get this. In fact, it's extraordinary. And it makes for an amazing environment for a city manager to do one's job, to have such talent and smarts. It's also a very challenging environment for a city manager to do it, because we're always trying to stay a step ahead of, you know, most of you are Ivy Leaguers or Military Academy. It's a very smart group of people, and so we're, it's a challenging but extraordinary environment to do one's job. And then lastly, I've been extremely lucky to work with the employees, my coworkers at Mercer Island, and they are coworkers. They aren't my employees. I started the city as a coworker, and in 79. In 2013, these people are still my coworkers, and it's, I guess I get teased about eating lunch in the lunchroom and that somehow that that's unusual. It never was unusual to me. These are the people that I spend my day with, and they're a great group. And I guess, I hope you never forget just how good these employees are. The management team, to the individual, are routinely recruited by other cities to come join them, and they can make more money, they'd have bigger staffs, they'd have more visible projects to work on, yet they stay here, and it's, it's hard to put your thumb on exactly why, but I'd like to think it's something about it's a good place to work, it's a good community, it's, there's something special going on at Mercer Island, and try not to forget that, because you have a real influence on what that's about. I'm really optimistic about the city in future years. You know, it's, we sit geographically in the middle of 4 million people, and yet, we still have this feel of sort of a rural, almost rural environment around us, in the midst of all this urbanization, and we have beautiful parks, we have beautiful homes, we have very attractive stores and a town center, and I don't think that's ever gonna change. We have great schools, and they'll only get better when the school bond passes, when the school bond passes. And I'm a big supporter of that. The town center's healthy and is only gonna continue to get healthier. This community is very safe, we continue to have very low crime, and very healthy citizens, and those two things go together. And the city's in great financial shape. Mercer Islanders pay their taxes, that's a real good thing, and for that, they expect really high value for their tax dollars. And I, what I always heard back through the survey work was, and for the most part, Mercer Islanders get what they expect. I mean, they are getting the value that they, they come to expect for their tax dollars. Your money is well-managed by your leadership team, particularly your finance director. We weathered the recession, we came out in strong, healthy shape. I, and the trend line is right for new revenue coming in and being stable. I think it's gonna be a fun time for you guys to have a council, because you'll have some choices to make, but they're really positive constructive choices. And then, my last observation for the optimistic future is, you have a great next city manager. Noel is, it's the same age as now that I was when I took over in 96, and he knows way more and he's done way more than I ever had. I was deer in headlights, 17 years, man. He's, uh, he's got a running start, and he's, he's gonna lead this organization, he's gonna do a great job, and the staff's all behind him. So, if, in closing, I'd like to leave you with a couple of thoughts. You know, I've, I've never been opinionated about anything, so this would be my last opportunity. So here's a couple of thoughts and pieces of advice. Take your jobs, use the council, take your jobs very seriously, because what you do at the local level really does make a difference in people's lives. It's, it's a job, it's not a hobby, but at the same time, don't take yourselves too seriously. Have some fun, crack a joke, keep, keep the tension down and the quality of the conversation up. Self-government's about community, it's not about the individual, and act from a sense of your collective agenda as opposed to a personal agenda. And start with the assumption that government can be a positive and constructive force in the lives of Mercer Islanders. I've always believed that, that's why I got into public service. And try to reject that cynical view that says government is slow and bloated and ineffective, because it's not an accurate picture, at least not on Mercer Island. It's a, it's a view that's maybe used to rationalize deconstruction of things rather than construction. You guys got a pretty good thing going here on Mercer Island. Keep it up. As a Mercer Island citizen, I'm counting on you. Good luck to you all, and thank you for all the many things. I'm guessing one of your councilmembers might wanna add a comment here. If you would like to, you are welcome to. If you're caught off-guard by that, then you don't have to, but the floor is open, so.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Rich, congratulations, and it's, it's a, it's been a pleasure serving with you. 35 years is a long time, and it's a special and it's a unique person that can go through the ranks with, in an organization. I say that very, very positively. You see that in, in the service often, where people come through the ranks and they're, they're a special and unique character of a person. I look, I will give you one concession there, when we compare rates to taxes, I will give you the concession, a rate is kind of a tax.
Six years with him, you got that.
Congratulations, I wish you and April the best of luck, and it's, it's gonna be a fantastic, any time in life you go to a new chapter, it's, it's fun, fascinating, and good luck to you.
To this. Karen?
Um, Rich, when I started looking into the city council, you were so amazingly open. I was just a citizen coming before you, asking you questions about the city and what does the council do, and what are the major issues going on in the community, and you took all the time in the world to sit me down as if there was nothing else on your agenda to do but to really bring me through these really important issues coming before the council, and I so appreciated it. And it never changed, once I joined the council, you were always open to explain an issue, to bring a different perspective, to explain or get the answer from staff, and really present such an open and such a clear picture, very neutral so we could make decisions. such an open and such a clear picture, very neutral so we could make decisions the way we saw fit, but I, it was just so commendable and I think that, I can see why you've had so many successful councils because we could really rely on you. So thank you so much and you will be missed.
Yeah?
I was listening to what Tom was saying, I was trying, God, I must have missed that class. Which may explain how come we have such a good relationship for fourteen years. Yeah, it's, I don't know, Rich, we go back so far now at this point and have gone through so much, good times, bad times, and, but always, always with this notion that, that we were as a city accomplishing things and moving forward. When Claire and I first moved onto Mercer Island back in nineteen eighty-nine, town center was a bunch of fast food restaurants and, and it was, there was nothing there. I mean, it was, it was scary how, how far behind we were. And we were at that, I think at a junction, at a crossroads there where we could have ended up like a Bellevue or an Issaquah or, or something where it would have been a completely different, different life on Mercer Island. And through what you had done before I got on the council and continued to do, it, we ended up with a much different experience in our, in our town center. We could have ended up with a lot more, a lot denser in terms of a population community and that's not the way it ended up. We could have ended up with far fewer parks and, or with a road system which was nowhere near as well maintained as, as what we have or with a family services infrastructure which was not as supportive as, as the one we have. And all of that, those things didn't just happen, they happened because of the leadership that you brought to the city, particularly as a city manager. We sit up here, we, we get to spend six hours or so a month to talk about lofty things and occasionally have an inspired discussion and sometimes an uninspired discussion. But, but you have to live this day in and day out and actually make sure that we do not go off the rails and implement the policies we come up with and implement a lot of things that never even get presented to the council and, and make it all work. As I said in an earlier comment, I mean, you are the CEO and, and that is not an easy job. There's seven of us up here and so any one of us goes crazy, there's six others to make sure that, that we don't do something stupid. But when you're CEO is, I mean, you're, you're making decisions day in and day out which, which really impact people's lives and impact this community. And you've done a marvelous job. And I just, I just want you to know that as, as having been up here for fourteen years and, you know, I, I've enjoyed, I've enjoyed our conversations, the good ones and the, the difficult ones, but, but they've always, you know, at the end of it, we've always agreed to, to, that it was, it was a worthwhile discussion and usually something good came out of it. So I, I commend you for, for everything you've done. This city is a very different place because you were the city manager for seventeen years. You've truly made a difference in this community. And there are very few people who will go through life being able to look back and say, I made a difference. And, and you are one of the fortunate people who will be able to say that for, for years to come and should be very proud of that.
Jane? It's going to be a hard act to follow, Dan has waxed delicate.
Well, my, my, I don't have a speech, but I have a little poem, so.
Ah.
This is apologies to Dr. Seuss. Unless there's a hiccup, unless there's a glitch, it appears that it's once and for all final that Rich has packed up his papers, doused the lights, locked the door, he simply won't be coming to City Hall anymore to manage the city, to make things go this way and that, to sit at his desk and solve city problems in nothing flat. He can sit back and relax now, have fun, take a nap. He can do what he wants and not take the rap for the potholes or problems or shortfalls in budgets. He won't have to give answers to island curmudgeons. When he came to the city in nineteen seventy-nine, he was a young man, just in his prime, with sideburns and bell bottoms, his future was bright. Since then, his hair's gone from light brown to pure white. Now thirty-five years later, he's seen the light that it's time to reclaim all those long Monday nights. He can say sayonara to a world acronimic where letters are used in a way quite endemic to meetings, conferences, emails and calls with agenda bills, documents, presentations and all. Goodbye to S N P D S G C F B T I D E T P. So long, R P C P S R C C R P P I C. These are all real. Farewell to Washdot and Neepa Sipa and Clu, Emac and Artid, that's just naming a few. He has brains in his head, he has feet in his shoes and he will steer himself in any direction he chooses. Oh, the places he'll go, to the desert, the golf course, the wineries, the pool. He may take a jet plane, a cruise ship and most certainly he'll venture out of this time zone to places exotic, hypnotic, altogether rhapsodic. And that most certainly means some trips to France with April in Paris and a visit to Tonnerneux. He steered the good ship, kept her floating in sound and won recognition awards, admiration, renown. It would be hard to keep going without him, a feat, but we have an able successor in the person named Treat. Rich can look back on his legacy, it's quite a career of hard work and service year after year. Now it's time for the island to give him our thanks for taking care of our city, keeping funds in the bank and making Mercer Island a place where we all want to live. So please join me together at his last meeting to give a good luck salute and no small adulation to Rich Conrad. Our thanks and congratulations.
Hi Debbie, you've got your hard act to follow. I'm expecting a first skit and then they.
And I don't dance, I don't say. And I know that Rich wants to get back to the football game as well. It was funny because I was looking at this and I realized nineteen seventy-nine when you came was actually about the time that I developed some degree of political consciousness here on Mercer Island, no less. And sitting up here now, I realize how much, as somebody who grew up on the island and has come back and was now raising her children, how much I have to thank you and so many of us who choose willingly to come back to this great community for the leadership and often unsung leadership. It's when we take these kids through City Hall and we explain to them that if there's no problem, you don't know about City Hall, it's when your toilet that doesn't flush or, you know, something goes wrong. So for all those years that you've put in and for all the kids out there and families who appreciate the work and the hours and the unsung activities and the you, of course, and all the staff. So from, from my perspective, I thank you for your longevity, I thank you for the continuity and principle and value, for the innovation that often peters out after many years and clearly didn't in this case. I've learned so much, I hope I'll continue to learn and I'm happy to have you as a neighbor now.
Thank you. See you at the bus stop.
You'll be there.
Benson, you've got a tough spot here.
Well, there's no expectations. Frankly, you know, I've been on the island almost as long as you, an employee of, of the island and I think as a citizen, I certainly thank you for everything you've done for the city of Mercer Island and for the direction you've taken. The city is definitely a place that is a great community to live and no smart, I mean, no small part owed to all your efforts and leadership. I feel deprived because I'm obviously a person who won't benefit from your coaching and from your wisdom and working on the city council here. And I think one thing that is a true testament of your leadership is the legacy you leave behind with just a fine staff of coworkers and again, no Treat as the successor. And so I look forward to learning from them because they have learned a lot from you and I will indirectly learn, gain from your wisdom and from your experience. So thank you for that.
And finally, I'll, I'll add just a few comments here. Ross and staff put together this resolution, except for one whereas, which I asked Ross to add, and that was the one which says, whereas exhibiting a tremendous patience which coached several generations of mayors and dozens of council members in how best to do their new jobs even as they told him how to do his. And I, I think that sort of sums up what a, what an amazing job you've done of being the patient teacher to all of us. We come in passionate, ardent, ready to change things at City Hall and not knowing, really essentially clueless as to how to, how to actually operate within this environment in an effective way. And you faced us, us, time after time, watching us make these same mistakes and having these same passions and each time patiently coaching folks in how to be successful in doing their jobs. And I, I don't know how you've managed to have that patience, but you have and I'm sincerely grateful to you for taking the time you took with me, especially as a council member, you get a moderate amount of his time. As the mayor, you, you take a lot of his time and he was always willing to give it. So thank you. You've been a mentor, a friend and a real, real model. So I thank you for all of those things that you've done. Now with that, we have this for you and I do have a nice cardboard box for you as well. I need that. We, yeah, we felt that the cardboard box was appropriate. So within this cardboard box, we have. Come on up. Don't let that around the house, I'm sure that'll go away. So we also have a little tool for you in your next tour.
That is so cool. Is a partner with city manager? Yeah, there's no way balls are going. Oh, that is so cool.
Alan gets the clip for sort of that.
That is so special. You guys, home run.
How about a picture of Rich and the council? Can we do that? Do you want to do it front, do you want to do it back to your wife? How do you want to do it?
Would it be okay if you're all up there?
Okay, everybody close.
Then you're.
Come on up here, yeah, come on up.
Sassy to the end.
Is that my guy?
Yeah, Benson, because you hit yourself. Okay. You all ready? I'll do one more. Thank you guys. You only got to be here for one of these. Are you next, Tom?
Push the mirror on.
Okay, here we go. Okay. So we have one more order of business, which is swearing in our new.
Yeah, get that here. All right, we're all getting this good and then we will stop. I don't know. I'm reporting.
Yeah, Rich, keep that on.
All right, you ready? Is your microphone on?
Testing, testing. Am I on? I'm on.
All right, all right. State your name.
Hi, Mo Treat.
Having been appointed city manager.
Having been appointed city manager.
Of the city of Mercer Island.
Of the city of Mercer Island.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of city manager.
Of the office of city manager.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
While upholding the provisions of chapter thirty-five A dot thirteen R C W.
While upholding the provisions of chapter thirty-five A dot thirteen R C W.
Very good. And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The constitution of the state of Washington.
The constitution of the state of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations. Okay, with that, we'll take a break for a few minutes, so let's come back at the seventy-six. Okay, with that, we'll take a break for a few minutes. So, let's come back at seven thirty.
Katie, video.
Ally, ready? You will return to order. We move now to the less fun parts of the evening. Appearance is always fun. So, it is time for appearances. If there's anyone who'd like to address the council, this is your moment. Any topic you wish. You have up to three minutes. Please begin by giving your name and your address, and there are general rules of conduct on the back, but in general, just be civil and everything will go well. So, anyone? Okay. Yeah, you want to? All right, closed appearances. I'll move to consent calendar. We have payables and payroll. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Do we accept the consent calendar?
Second, I'd like to pull the payables.
Oh, okay. Left with just payroll. All in favor, say in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? All right, come to that passes unanimously, move to payables. Tony.
So, on set one, page eight, I just wanted to ask a question about the charge for, I think it's $1,600 for backpack blowers. And I was wondering if those are, what they're used for, and if those are gas or electric?
Yes, good question, Rose. Those are, those are gas-powered. They are used by our stormwater crews for blowing out wet leaves around watercourses and things of that nature. And I do know there is an interest in moving away from gas, both from a noise perspective as well as a pollution perspective. So, we are going to be looking at electric and battery-powered in the future. One of the constraints is just when you're dealing with that kind of leaf material, you do need a certain horsepower. And so, gas has been the traditional type of engine we've used. But I know that's a concern, and we're going to hopefully, next time around, we'll have some other options.
Great, thank you.
You want to make a motion?
I'd like to. We approve accounts payable. Second.
All in favor, say in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we move to first time in regular business, agenda four nine one zero, regulation and licensing of solicitors. This is the second reading and hopefully adoption. Katie, welcome.
For the record, Katie Knight, your city attorney, along with...
Yes, Ed Holmes, your police chief.
So, this is the second reading of the ordinance on regulation and licensing of solicitors. And given the direction provided at the last council meeting in 2013, we've added two additional specific inquiries into the licensing questions. We have clarified the definition of solicitor. We're going to have the city staff set a reasonable fee for the license for solicitors, and we're going to set the license expiration at a one-year rolling date after issuance. So, we've talked a great deal about this, had a number of meetings, and we're going to build before more questions, as is the chief, if anyone hasn't.
Okay, council questions. Benson?
Yeah, I spoke to Katie a little bit earlier. I have a question regarding the intent, I guess, of the ordinance with respect to, this is paragraph B of section 516 point oh three oh. And this is where you list six different groups of people who are exempt from the licensing and registration requirements. But the thing that, I'm a little puzzled by the phrase that they must comply with five point sixteen point oh two oh. And I guess I'm just wondering whether or not there is an unintended consequence. And having gone through this recently as far as door-belling, is the intent of the ordinance to basically tell candidates who are door-belling that if they happen to see a no solicitation sign, that they are not to doorbell that home?
And I think Councilmember Wong is referencing specifically subsection oh three oh, number five, a person engaged in political or religious speech or solicitation. So, in our discussions, I told Councilmember Wong that I thought that when an individual does put out a no solicitation sign, that they intend that somebody not come to their door and solicit or provide their point of view. We talked about whether there's an ambiguity with regard to somebody collecting or seeking funds to promote a campaign as opposed to someone just door-belling to give information with regard to their campaign, but that's potentially soliciting a vote. So, at the end of the day, it looks like that there's a council intent there. And if you do intend that a candidate be allowed to go door-to-door even with a no solicitor sign, we thought we could change the language to read a person engaged in political or religious speech and solicitation instead of or solicitation. And we thought that might clarify if somebody's actually seeking funds, so that that person would have to, the person seeking funds would have to comply with the no solicitation sign. It's a tweak, but I think it's a distinction worth a difference. But it looks to be a policymaking decision for the council to make.
And you alerted that we have another attorney on the council immediately.
We saw it.
Welcome, welcome. I think he's raising an interesting and well-knowned point, something that we need to be conscious of. And I, my initial reaction is not to know how to deal with this. I'm not sure that, I'm sort of lanching in there without asking other council members' comments, but I'll riff on this for just a second, and then we'll go from there. By putting an "and" there, you essentially try to take political door-belling out of the context of the ordinance entirely.
Political and religious?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Which becomes an odd place to have it since you've attempted to capture everything else.
Correct.
Five point one six oh two oh only applies to solicitors. So, if a candidate is not considered a solicitor in the first instance, then it's irrelevant. And if you look at the definition of solicitor, I would submit to you that a candidate is not a solicitor.
You can, I think you should speak to it, because we actually had this discussion. It's better coming from you.
Yeah, I talked, I mentioned that maybe one way to approach this is to actually exclude, be specific and exclude from the definition of solicitor, certain groups of people. But the way that this currently reads, it basically says that the following, again, six categories, they must comply with five sixteen point oh two oh, which not only is the time restriction, but is also the fact that they are not to basically, again, knock on the doors where there's a no solicitation sign.
If they're a solicitor. If they're not a solicitor, then five sixteen oh two oh doesn't apply to them. So, if you've got a person engaged in political or religious speech or political, but it's still awkward, I agree, it's awkwardly wording, because you shouldn't have to say a person engaged in political or religious speech or solicitation. It should be just a person engaged in political or religious solicitation, period. And take out the word speech, because this will, bill this ordinance only applies to solicitation in the first instance. So, if you said that, if you may be said a person engaged in political or religious solicitation, and then you, and then if a candidate is not a solicitor by definition, then you get yourself out of the problem. Does that make sense?
Yeah, again, it would specifically exclude them from the definition of solicitor. And I think it is, to me, it reads, it's a little confusing the way I see it right now.
Well, I mean, for example, if someone was going around, going door-to-door asking for money for political cause or for religious cause, then the intent would be that they would be subject to five sixteen oh two oh.
Let me, I'll pass over the mic.
From a self-preservation perspective, we certainly want to have politicians not to be considered as a solicitor. A politician doesn't have no common sense to respect a no solicitation sign.
They're not going to be around for too long. That probably didn't add too much to the...
It added levity, which we did. Yes, it did. Anyone else want to read in here before we let these lawyers beat themselves senseless on this? Tony, do you have something?
I do think that, at first, I was skeptical of the removing speech, the word speech. But I do think if you look under the definition of solicitor, it's very clear that it's someone who's selling or exposing somebody for a sale or trade or deals with traffics. And a politician who's dealing with just selling their opinion or their words doesn't fall in that definition, and so therefore, they would not fall under this definition. So, I think if we remove speech, then it doesn't, it neither, it doesn't negate the ability of a political or religious person from going to the door with speech. So, I think that's good.
Did somebody else have a finger on the microphone? No? Okay. I guess I'm...
Aren't we just at questions?
Yeah, well, sure. Let's, yeah, let's try and slow down just for a moment here. So, a question has been raised. We've got that one floating around out there. Are there other questions that we want to get on the table at this point?
Benson's question raised an interest. I'm just looking at this. So, more newspaper carriers...
First amendment.
If they're, if you consider a person throwing a newspaper to be a newspaper carrier, and obviously, they throw a newspaper before 10 o'clock in the morning. So, are they, are we saying we can't drop off a newspaper before 10 o'clock in the morning? We can't be saying that.
If you subscribe to it, then they would be allowed to do that. So, if you look at the provision that talks about subfloor, it says a person who, after having been specifically requested and able to do so, calls upon another person for the purpose of displaying good literature or giving information about any article, thing, product, or service. If somebody has subscribed to a paper, they're not soliciting. But if you're talking about someone who's going door-to-door and saying, hey, buy my paper...
So, I guess I end up thinking, and this is beyond questions and undue opinion, but thinking that I'd like to see a draft of the structure the way Benson suggested, which is with these exemptions actually pulled into the definition rather than here, or somehow divvied up into those that belong here with oh two oh still applying, and those that may have belonged over in oh one oh as exemptions within the definition. So, I'll try and phrase that as a question. What does council...
I would hugely caution you against that, because if you recall, and Councilmember Wong and I spoke about this, we spent some of the original meetings discussing commercial versus non-commercial solicitors. And so, the persons listed on, the persons that are shown here as exempt are still solicitors, but they're exempt from the licensing requirements. The clarification Councilmember Wong is talking about in sub five is a candidate going door-to-door, probably soliciting for votes, but is that, so what we're looking for is the council's intent. Did you intend to capture the politician door-belling, or did you want to say, no, that person doesn't count because they're not technically a solicitor? I think that the word fix that the deputy mayor suggested helps us clarify that persons going around and trying to collect for political campaign would be solicitors. But all these people on this group are potentially solicitors, and so they're just persons that would be exempted under First Amendment law, that we've spent a lot of time talking about. Some of them, if you recall, I supplied the RCWs where, for example, the, what is it on here? The peddlers of fruits, vegetables, berries, and such. There's some specific RCWs that exempt them out. So, a lot of these are exempted out by virtue of their, by an RCW or just their status as a charitable solicitor, non-commercial solicitor.
All right, well, you had me back. That would be a terrible idea, so...
Okay. I should have just shut up.
Other questions? I had one. I'm over on...
Oh, seven.
Five. Katie and I have already talked about this, because it was no surprise to her. But... Katie and I have already talked about this, because it was no surprise to her, but 5.16.070 says, "Any solicitor subject to licensing requirement in this chapter shall carry his or her license at all times." It seemed to me that that might be a little bit odorous, and probably we just wanted them to carry it while they were soliciting rather than at all times. Katie, you had something?
I thought that was a good idea.
Yeah. You had something to throw in the winders.
I just wrote "after all times, when soliciting."
Yeah, and that would fix that.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, so Katie, are you okay with the correction that Dan has proposed?
Yes, I think that was just fine.
And so I understand that it's just striking?
Speech or.
Speech or. Okay.
Make one other wording suggestion with, on paragraph four, just above there, I would suggest that displaying goods doesn't cover dropping off a newspaper. Can we just say displaying or providing goods?
Who'd prefer?
Or delivering goods?
Yes.
Displaying or delivering goods?
Correct, okay.
How about displaying or delivering goods? And then, just so it's not confusing, maybe the newspaper carriers say, "Newspaper carriers accept as otherwise provided" in paragraph four below.
Perfect.
So the newspaper carrier who is around collecting for the newspaper's subscription, because they do that.
Yeah.
I mean, then that would be covered under four.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, on one, you had.
Newspaper carriers accept as otherwise provided in paragraph four below.
Okay.
And then four, adding the words "or delivering" after displaying.
Okay.
Then you've got the change that you just, Katie gave you on.
Yes.
070. The words "while soliciting, after times."
Yeah, "when soliciting," yes, yes, yeah. Yeah. Okay, other questions? Okay, let's take it then to, let's have, okay, I guess the question becomes more of a motion, given that we have a bunch of corrections that have been put in here. Ally, Katie, how do you want us to handle, you want us to go from the text as written and then add amendments to it, or can we just take it as a motion with the corrections all lumped together as stated now?
I think you can do the adopt ordinance as corrected.
Okay.
As amended.
As already amended.
As amended.
Okay. So I'd love to have a motion which would then allow us to move to discussion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 14C-01, regulating and licensing solicitors as amended.
Second.
Okay, so we have motion and second, discussion, council member discussion. Anyone want to start? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess that this is a new change that I'm kind of curious on what it will be like 12 months down the road, similar to how we did a 180 look at the ambulance tax. But I suppose that no news would be good news on this, and maybe that should be the gauge on how well this amendment, or how well this new law is accepted by the community. So I vote for this, and like I say, at first blush, unless somebody wants to bite on it suggesting a relook at it in 12 months, but it's not absolutely necessary for me to support this on that.
Other comments? Dan?
I voted against this last time, I'll vote against it again. I have always believed that we can go further with respect to the nonprofits that we're going in this ordinance, and without offending religious or political speech. I fully appreciate what the First Amendment says, but to carve out such a huge hole for all nonprofits, to me, is beyond what I think we are legally required to do. So I just feel like we're only addressing a tiny bit of the issue that people brought to our attention. So I made that clear all along, that I believe this ordinance doesn't go far enough, and so I will vote against it.
Other comments? Jane?
I just would like to speak in support of this. It doesn't go as far as proposed originally, but I think it's a very good first step. It starts to solve a problem, a perceived problem in certain neighborhoods at certain times of the year, and I think it sends out the word to certain companies that send van loads of solicitors out in the neighborhoods that, and it lets people know that they can put up their "no solicitation" signs in the windows, and it's a beginning without being too onerous to other groups and nonprofits especially. So I think I will be supporting this.
Okay, anyone else? I will support this. I think we've had quite a bit of legal assessment done of this, and appreciate that work that Katie has done. I think we're trying to take a reasonable step into this issue. Mike, I think your points were all taken, that we need to be listening in the future to what the citizens are saying about whether this does improve the situation or not. I don't think we need to formally revisit it, but certainly, if we're still hearing that, then revisiting it will be the thing to do. But I think this is a good step, and I'm happy to support it. Anyone else? All right, all in favor of adopting ordinance number 14C-01, regulating and licensing solicitors as amended? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief and Katie. Okay, we move to Agenda B4909, Fire Station 92 Construction Budget. Glenn, welcome.
Here this evening to talk about what's happened in the last month, and looking at our unfavorable bid results for the Fire Station project, and some ways we can soften that blow a little bit. But first, I wanted to give you all, yours timed out, just a quick update about stuff that we've been doing in the last month, also leading up to construction.
I noticed driving here this evening that I actually ripped some pieces off the building.
Demolition is starting.
Yeah, just this afternoon.
Do we get exposure wrong?
No, I'm afraid not. We'll get it wrong, and it all goes down.
So just real briefly, which was mostly invisible to the community, but Chris's folks moved into their temporary closure on November 6th, and that went fairly smoothly, and from what I've heard so far, the response capabilities have been fine for adjusting to the new temporary home for about a year. We fully executed the contract with Corp Inc. on December 18th, after going through the insurance requirements and all that stuff, so that was taken care of. The next day, we completed removal of asbestos in the building. There was quite a bit that needed to be taken care of. That's happened. Also, on the 19th, we had a pre-construction conference that had everybody who's going to be involved in the project, from city inspectors to all the contractors and folks on the architect's side there. And then, leading into what Amy's, what you're going to start talking about is what we've been calling a value analysis process has been underway. It's been a joint effort with city staff. Many of us met at Hall, the architects on the project, and Corp Construction, and just last week, we brought their subcontractors into discussion, so take it from there, Amy.
Good evening, council. Amy D. Dominicus, project manager, Fire Station 92. We want you to still know that we still have a lot of work to do, but we really have hit the ball, hit the ground running, and Miller Hall has really put a good effort into identifying items that, you know, could be removed from the project, and we had a very good meeting, first amongst staff, with, we're on our third draft now of items that have been analyzed, basically, kind of the real big-ticket items. I think in your council Agenda B packet, you've read through some of the cautions that we have with the mechanical system. Last time we met with you, it was identified that the mechanical numbers came in very high. Having met with the subcontractors and the architects' team with their cost analysis person that was involved, it basically, some items came out that we found out, certain items are actually probably, for this building, very much overspecified, and we're working on that now to make sure that, with the city's facilities manager, to make sure that the city gets what it needs in order to run the building efficiently, but we found out we had a few Rolls Royces where we needed a Honda, so we're working on that right now. The biggest things that really came out of this value analysis process, at least to the point, we tried to pick the low-hanging fruit, items that would not affect the facility's performance and/or operations for Chief Tubbs. But really, the biggest items that we found, in order for the savings, obviously, the undergrounding in the front. What I was also advised about that is that there are facilities in place that will allow us in the future, at any time, the way that the electrical system is being fed into the building, it's basically thought of as a ahead-of-time for PSC to come at any point to actually do that undergrounding. So that, I just wanted to bring that to your attention today. As far as the mechanical controls, we're going to still be working on that. We're working on the items that we're trying not to impact the schedule and/or chance-for-change orders for the project. So on that note, if there are any specific items, I'd like you to have me address. I'm happy to do so, to the best of my knowledge at this point in time, we're still continuing this process.
So before you go there, Glenn, you and I had this conversation in May or earlier today, but I was hoping you would, one of you spend a bit more time on the what went wrong that got us into a situation, because it's not expensive components, because the expensive components were in the bid estimate, and so when they estimated, they should have accurately.
There was, yeah, there was.
Something else went badly amiss.
Somebody dropped the ball big time when it came to some of the mechanical items that were specified, maybe had specified items in the beginning, and they had changed throughout the process, and those items, we think, were not picked up by the cost estimator. So, yes, there was an issue with the mechanical components. We had a very good conversation with the subcontractor, and basically, they said to us, you know, really, there are no super-extremist things, other than some of these controls that they thought were out of rack, but basically, everything is middle-of-the-road, except for a few items. The hydronic system, that's, you know, a long-term payback item. We've had this discussion before about that, you know. Their thought on that is, yes, you're going to pay a lot upfront, but it's a system that both the facilities manager.
But again, it's, what I'm trying to get at is, is not whether the component that was specified was the optimal component for the use, but the fact that the component that specified was supposed to cost X, and it ended up.
Costing Y.
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 And Y, exactly, yeah, thank you. Because clearly, that's where the problem lies in the first place, is that the contractor or the architect hired the estimator, and the estimator blew it. So I'm curious.
That's, I mean, that's.
Who pays the estimator's bill, for instance?
Well, obviously, Miller Hall's paying the bill, but the city is reimbursing Miller Hall. One thing we've also found out too, and I think there was a question asked about all this work that Miller Hall has done to this point, getting their cost estimator involved and all that, will the city be billed for that? Any answer is no. So I know that was a question that came up as well.
If I might just interject, one of the things that's come out recently, the contractor has showed us that, I think he got five bids from different firms for the mechanical plumbing HVAC part of the project, and he has told us, I haven't seen any documentation, but that all of those came in within a few thousand dollars of each other, so clearly, the estimator missed the mark by a lot. That many people in the business came in with bids for the contractor that were that close for that segment? Yeah. It was the mayor.
And, so, I'm not a guy who does these kinds of projects all the time, but is there any recourse at that point for the city in saying, "Hey, you got it wrong," and, I mean, other than things we've already ruled out, because we've already assigned the.
I would have to defer to chat with Katie on that, just as far as from a contractual standpoint, and how that works.
Okay.
And that may be, you may not want to have that for discussion in a public session, because there may be attorney-client privileged conversations that need to be had as part of whatever strategy might evolve from that question.
Correct.
Okay.
I was just about to say that.
Yeah, but I just, just to make sure that we fully answered the mayor's question, in terms of the why, why was the estimator wrong? Right, just correct me if I've got this wrong. I think there were, from my understanding, two components. One is that they didn't probably completely understand and price some of the HVAC equipment and controls that were within the design, and then two, they underestimated the growth of the inflation in the market due to increased construction demand. Is that?
That's, I think that's a very good way to put it. It's not, it's not just A, it's not just B, it's a combination of both.
I appreciate that. I mean, that was kind of, that was what I was thinking before, is a clear answer as to what went wrong.
But of course, those are the reasons why. But they are the experts, the estimator and Miller Hall, they are the experts, and it is expected that those artsies part of doing the estimate, that they will do that. So, I mean, that's the challenge, and they failed at that challenge. And who's responsible? Well, ultimately, we are responsible, Miller Hall. So I'm looking forward, next session, we're going to have an executive session, to address this? Is that something of the basis word?
I don't think we've said that.
We have another, we have another executive session for labor agreements.
Right, but this is a different, but what I heard from the city manager was, that's something that we need to discuss, strategy.
If we choose to discuss it, it should be, we should consider doing it in executive session. I'm not sure we're at the point of deciding that we want to carry on down that avenue. And from my perspective, I saw two parts to this evening's discussion. The first was, what happened? And the second was, okay, and what are we doing about it? And I wanted to get this what happened on the table and discussed in some detail first, and then back to this discussion, which I think correctly launched, which is, so now what do we do about it? And how do we make the books balance well enough to move forward in some fashion? So.
Before we leave on what's happened, if memory serves me correctly, this HVAC was on a little bit different path, because this was the, this was a different system. This was the thing that staff came to us during the planning session in June and said, you know, we had to make this decision, and so we made it. And I don't, my guess is that the estimator probably hadn't shown up in the picture at that point, that that was more of a Miller Hall call, but I'm just guessing. I don't, I would have thought the estimator doesn't show up until probably August or September.
I mean, they're involved throughout the whole process, but they're involved as the sets are, so I think they did initially at, obviously, pre-design, schematic design, so that's very early in the session, establishing the budget. We have about 50% design development, there was a budget done, and then once again, at the 90% CDs.
Yeah, but I was saying, there was this one specific item that was called out during the planning session.
Yes.
Something that staff felt that because of the lead time, you had to make a decision, or because of, if I, something like.
Yes, it was, it was basically, it was one of those things where you had to design it through the whole process. It wasn't something you can just plug and play with the project.
Okay. About the HVAC. The HVAC, I'm kind of, these savings did not include going back to the original HVAC system. Is that right? The recommendation is not to go back.
One of the options was to go back to the original system.
Well, if I read the agenda correctly, you're not recommending that. You're recommending stick.
We're recommending sticking with what we have now because of the amount of time for design, and also the potential chance for change orders, that you're saving X amount of dollars, which may cost you twice, twice the amount.
And the question, I have two questions on that. It says on, under mechanical and plumbing, number 13, relatively comparable energy performance can be achieved. Provides ductless HVAC units in lieu of an in-slab hydraulic heating and cooling. Relatively comparable energy performance can be achieved. With that relatively comparable energy performance with the new and the old? Is that what that says?
The old being, identify old and new for me, so that I.
Oh, Amy, you tell me. I mean, I'm reading.
The system in place right now is a hydronic system. The system that they're saying.
It looks like what you're asking, what you're suggesting here is, we can save $30,000 by going with the ductless HVAC unit.
You can save $30,000, there's a timeframe associated with that, that also, as far as the rental of the space. We estimate at least two months' time extension in order to do this. We could reestimate that.
What we say here is, if we use the ductless system in lieu of the hydraulic system, we save $30,000, and then you say period, there's relatively comparable energy performance can be achieved. So why are we spending that $30,000 for this hydronic system if there can be relatively comparable energy performance?
It was the preferred system by the facilities group at the time.
And I think, if I could just add to it, because I think that another piece, and I think you've been mentioning that, is that there's also other factors that if we switch at this point, there's some redesign issues, it's going to push the project back, which obviously, there's costs to that. If we push it back by, what, two months? So that, my understanding is that the cost savings that would be achieved would probably be negligible, and that there were either better ways to cost save than to make that change at this point, so we could get back.
I feel so frustrated on this, is because what I wanted, excuse me, what I wanted was a penciling out of why we're going to this more expensive, significantly more expensive, and we've never seen that, a penciling out of why we're spending this extra money on this significant piece of new upgraded equipment. And then you've got it right here, that it's basically comparable energy performance. So we're paying an additional $30,000 for comparable energy performance.
So it's asking, why in the world do we do that in the first place?
I'm not the architect, I'm the messenger.
Miller Hall here, that's another question I have. Why isn't Miller Hall here? I mean, they're on the hot seat, and they're not here.
Tana? I'm going to take that as a rhetorical question for the moment, since.
No, it's not rhetorical, it's, why aren't they here? Amy, or, no, why aren't they here?
There was no specific request at this point.
Well, it's because they're on the hot seat. It's obvious why they're.
And I think, I mean, just, there's been a lot of work by staff, it was the direction to staff to go seek the cost savings. So we did spend time with Miller Hall, and hopefully, with the answers that we brought back. And that if you look at the motion that's being proposed, is to direct staff to continue to try to do cost savings, and this was intended to reflect the work that's been done to date. So the staff will continue to develop cost savings as we go along, and we're able to find, I don't want to say cut those corners, but to find those cost savings during the project. But this is our best look at it at this point. You can see what we eliminated, because even though it might seem facially attractive, in the end, there were hidden costs in doing some of those, making some of those decisions, as we just mentioned.
And maybe.
Mr. Mayor, I have additional questions, but I'll pass. And when we come around, if I can again have the floor.
Sure.
To inform the conversation, this might be a good time to just talk a little bit more about some of the cost savings you've identified since the time the agenda was written, and some of the work you've done with the subcontractors.
Tana, you want to get in there before we do that? Because, no, I think you're right, we've got to move to that, but Tana did overhand it, so.
Yeah, just continuing on the HVAC, on beating that horse. I know the staff has done a great deal of work on identifying cost-saving opportunities, so thank you for that. I feel, however, that number 13 is a, is not really a real option, and that, you know, we say, it could save $30,000, it's included as part of the $100,000 that we could save, and yet it says, but we could be, it could take one month, and this could increase change orders, and it could affect the schedule, and so it's really not an option. I mean, I don't think anyone up here is thinking, yep, we're going to do that one, and try and save $30,000, but it's going to cost us 60, but by golly, we're just going to go for it anyway. So I, I guess this is maybe more of a comment, I'm trying to figure out how I can ask it as a question, but I don't feel like this is, isn't it true that this is not, that, you know, if we're presented with potential savings, if, you know, if we were presented with, okay, we came up with $70,000 worth of things that we could save, I mean, $100,000 was randomly picked out of the air, and I don't feel like this $30,000 is really a realistic choice. And so I'm wondering, are there other things in this list, here's my question, are there other things in this list that are also not realistic choices that we would choose, i.e. the apron, that, you know, in the end, we're actually going to get to $0,000 of savings, because they're really not real choices that we can make?
If I might respond to the HVAC issue, what we learned at the meeting last Thursday with the subcontractors, who will actually be doing this part of the project, was that there are other things that we can save significant money, probably the $30,000 or more, without redesigning the HVAC system. So, and that all happened after this had to be in Ally's hands. So the good news is that there are other things within that general category of HVAC and mechanical plumbing, that we can indeed save money on without significant redesign or risk. Yeah.
I think what I'm looking for, then, is a realistic, perhaps, updated list of what are reasonable places where we can be saving money. Because it is a list that includes, I think some things are probably very realistic, but some, as has been pointed out, mechanical and plumbing, that at the end of the day, I don't think you're recommending, and I think we probably would not move forward on. So I don't have a solid sense right now whether we're talking $100,000 in savings, 50, what that number is. So what would be terrific for me right now is to get an updated version, whether it's verbally from you, or if you have something available to us, that says, these are the solid cost savings and recommendations that we'd like to carry forward.
Yeah, and unfortunately, we have to do that in parallel with starting construction. And so that list will develop as we move into the construction phase. What we're giving you tonight is what we have at this moment. And our goal, as the agenda says, is to save at least $100,000.
And if I could just, just to clarify too, I just want to make sure that the council's aware that, that the staff will take the direction to save the monies, and that's just for informational purposes, and not because it's being brought back to the council to make decisions as to what cost-saving procedures will occur. Because at that point, that's why we have a project manager. So we love you all, but this, having you manage the project, I know you all good project managers, but at that point, it should be just staff reporting back to you, saying, here's where we've made those cuts, and is that what you're seeking?
I'm comfortable with that, but you would also imply that there was more information since the time that this was.
And we're giving that to you verbally tonight.
Yeah, that additional information is that we do think in the HVAC, without redesign, which is different than what's represented in that section 13, there is 25 or 30, or maybe a little bit more savings that we can, we can achieve there, with some changes in controls. But like Katie said, this is really, it becomes more of an implementation in the staff role to negotiate that, and to pick the components, and to try and move this forward. So what we are looking at for tonight would be a more generalized direction, based upon the expertise in the room, that we think we can get to $100,000, some council concurrence with that, and then we'll move ahead and try and achieve that. We can report back to you at various times as to how we're doing on the project. I think this is one where we'd want to give you regular updates anyway, just because it's an important project for the city. But that's where we are, and that's kind of what we need tonight.
And Kessler, if I might add, one of the values of the meeting that we had last week with the contractor and his subcontractors, was they're all really clear on the mission here, that as we move through this project, we will be looking for ways to save wherever we can. They got that.
But that's, of course. I have a, I'm sorry.
Let me get, give Tana a chance to go first, because she's had her hand up, and then we'll go to you.
Well, sure. I spoke to Tana, then Debbie, Jane, Craig Benson, the deputy mayor, then it comes back to me.
Wow, I'm getting a headache here. I'm just trying to go off of what the latest hand up I saw was, and Tana, Tana got that. I didn't see anybody else with a hand up at this point. I remember you said you wanted another mic at this, so. Tana, Mike, Jane, Benson, and then eventually, we'll get back to where we thought we should be next, which is to run through the list of savings that you guys have on T-Dub. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I completely agree that the council should not be project managing, and that's very clear. However, my concern is that, I guess maybe this is procedural, are we, what are we trying to do tonight? Because while I'm fine with you guys making cost savings decisions, I'm not comfortable with something of you guys, for instance, deciding that we're not going to underground the overhead power lines, and have that just as a, well, that was just a cost savings that we decided, because that's a huge policy component, and one of the very reasons why we chose to redo the fire station, because we didn't think it was going to be safe if there was an earthquake. So it's kind of like removing the seatbelt and driving your car 100 miles per hour and just hoping you don't crash. So the whole point of having a new fire station was if there's an earthquake, we want to make sure the fire station is there and is usable. And if there's power lines above it and they fall down, then we can't use it, and so we didn't accomplish our goal of having a fire station that we can use. So again, I'm, in general, in concept, completely comfortable with the fabulous staff work that you guys have always done, but if it's something that gets down to a decision like that, that seems to be kind of major, and I want to make sure that we do weigh in on something that's so fundamental to this project.
Mike?
Well, no, I have to go.
No?
Have your other.
Yeah.
So to what the city manager said, you said that there are $30,000 in savings, in HVAC savings?
Yes, based upon, and based upon the meeting that Glenn and the team had with the subcontractors late last week, they identified savings in HVAC that are different than what's discussed in the Miller Hall letter, that amount to what we think is going to be $30,000. And that don't involve a redesign, and Glenn, do you want to?
Maybe a little clarification will help. The Miller Hall letter is, in that section, is focusing just on HVAC. We had a broader discussion with the subcontractors about other things, like building controls, things that wouldn't require redesign, and those are the areas that we're now focused on. I think Amy will be hearing periodically from the subs, saying, here's, here's a proposal for something that we can change as we move into that phase of the project, and here's what we think the savings would be.
Yeah, that control source was a sole-source item, basically military-grade, very high-priced. And like we said, we don't, for this building, we don't need that, and we discussed it with chief and facilities operations, and they agree that there are other systems out there that we can visit. And by revisiting that with a triple specification as opposed to a sole-source specification, our numbers will come in much more favorably when there's a little healthy competition.
Okay, so I was criticized significantly last meeting by saying the building is being gold-plated. So what you, another way of saying that is, military spec is gold-plating. Is there any other military spec or gold-plating systems?
This is the only one we know of, based, we've only been involved in this costing exercise for the last two and a half weeks with the holidays. So we're getting this information strictly from the subcontractors, and that was what they had mentioned.
Well, I think council members since said that we don't want to be the project managers, but I'm concerned, the path that this is going, that this is being managed to, meaning, you know, it started out as a 640, 364 square foot, dollar per square foot, and it's, God, if my math is right, it's almost double that. So I would ask that you really, really look for other gold-plating systems in this building. Some other questions I have is, on number, number four, you talked about HDPE piping. An HDPE, is that the black pipe?
High-density polyethylene.
I mean, that, that's been illegal, or we haven't used that?
No, it's a city-specified item. We're using cast iron currently. HTP can be used, but it's one, it was specified as a sustainable item, based on some of the recent history with the direction PVCs are going.
How about the black pipe with the grooves in it?
No, no, no.
It's a solid rail pipe.
It's a.
Okay, it's, I'm thinking something else then. Okay, good. So the, the iron pipe, is that in-ground, or is that pipe that's?
It's underground.
Okay, so, all right. The 30%, or 1% for arts, is there any consideration in getting rid of that? Or how do we get rid of that? Maybe that's a question for the.
That's a bigger discussion, and Katie, I know that might be something you may would like to weigh in on. We've had that discussion over the years, and the council's chosen not to make any change in that. You certainly couldn't make it at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I think we're at a critical stage here, where we're going over more than we need to, and we need to put all the cards on the table. And I would ask that the staff bring that up to the council as a way to minimize the cost, or to get this thing back in the budget. The garage door, I didn't see the garage door on here? The upgraded garage door?
The, or the side versus?
That's correct.
No, that has been removed as an option.
So you're.
But to state it more clearly, it's, it's not an option, but it's built in, the more expensive door was built in.
Yes, yes.
Well, why are you not having that as an option to?
But that is also the one where we, if we put that, if we change that, we end up with a bidding problem with the, one where we had that bid challenge. And so if we reverse ourselves in the doors, we're going to reopen the bid challenge, but make sure you don't want to do it.
Correct.
I have $53,000 for additional site work, is that, has that all been identified as savings? This is from the last, this was from AB 4893, the last time we talked about this.
The civil site work in that top area, basically, we are down to the bones at this point. We can't take anything away without taking that function through the building.
Fiber optics were?
Fiber optics are not in the project.
Oh, we're not doing that?
We're not doing that.
Okay, good, that's a service. Okay, lead, are we?
Lead has been scrapped many, many moons ago.
All right, that's all I have.
All right, Jay?
Well, just a comment, I agree with some of what Mike said and some of what Tana said, because it seems to me that items number one, two, and three are, well, item number one is, as Tana pointed out, a safety item. It's also an aesthetic thing, as is item number two and three, as is number 11, an installation of the insignia, it seems to me important to have. These, these items, because they're aesthetic, I think, would definitely qualify for beautification funds, according to the use of that fund, because it is intended for use of beautification, not only of the town center, but of the island, and the funds come from BNO taxes, so it seems to me that that would qualify. Certainly, if you think about the fact that $100,000 a year subsidizes the Mary Wait Pool, under what criteria? So I would suggest that these aesthetic items be paid for by the beautification fund.
You want to try and respond? It'd be nice to have Chip here to bring me in on that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the technical answer to that, to that question.
The beautification fund is just part of the general. The beautification fund is just part of the general fund, effectively. It's just, there's no limitations on what money in the beautification fund is used for, but the money's fungible. So, you know, to say you're taking it out of the beautification fund, it's just like taking 2013 surplus tax revenue and it makes no difference at that point. I mean, it's the question, but it is an important policy direction for council to give staff, because if we, if we believe that, you know, $100,000 make a difference and we want to go for gold plating or etched glass or whatever is here, and we'll just figure out a way to pay for it, or we don't. And, but we need to give staff that direction, one way or the other. So I think, I don't think we should, I don't think it's relevant so much where it gets paid for from, because it's all coming out of the same place, Mercer Island taxpayers at the end of the day. And so it's more important that we make sure to staff what our direction is in terms of where we want them to do, go as far as saving money. But I wasn't going to speak to that yet. I'll wait till Benson, I think, was going to...
Yeah, Benson's up and then we'll go to Debbie and we'll try and bring some order to the situation. So Benson.
Yeah, I just have some global comments, some high and low. I guess one question I have is, how did the $100,000, how is that amount determined as far as your target savings? And then the second question is, it goes, I guess, to a timing question, is, you know, you mentioned that construction is, I guess that's already started in many respects. So the question is, when do these decisions need to be made? And how does the council get involved? Understand that we're not going to be project managers and that's certainly not the intent, but if we're going to be able to weigh in on a meaningful way, I guess, when does that all happen? And so, I know, which, yeah.
So your first question, Councilor Long, the finance director took a look at the outlook for the next year and his feeling was, if we could get to $100,000, that would take a lot of pressure off where he's trying to take care of other needs elsewhere.
What would the council directions say?
It's a budget management.
Well, I assume that that's not a cap, but I mean, if there's more savings...
Oh, we hope there's even, yes.
I think on page three of the table, on page three reflects why that number came up, that the $100,000 came up.
Right. Okay, Debbie.
I'm just going to give some summary comments here. And I do truly believe that the council as a whole, or the vast majority of the council certainly doesn't want to start project managing, the fire station, construction, et cetera. But I think what I'm hearing is that there are enough questions about some significant components of the project in terms of where we are and perhaps even what we had understood, or some of the basic principles that were being applied in the design and ultimately the bidding of the project. So when I hear the $100,000, I have confidence in staff. Where I'm not confident is where that $100,000 is coming from. And council member Sen makes an excellent point. In the calculation of the cost savings outlined here, there are project components, but there are also policy components. And I really do want to emphasize the issue of the overhead power along 68. At various points, we talked about it just in front of the fire station. We talked about extending it even beyond the fire station, I believe, the whole street ultimately. So, you know, my question, I think, is going to come back to Noel, and that is, I, you know, $100,000, you guys are telling me it's $100,000. You guys, you're consistently, you know, on target with that, but I'm hoping that at some point, were we to ask or need to review, we could see some more solid line items. And specifically, I do want to see the discussion about the overhead powering on 68 hold and anything else, you know, to go back through notes, if that's what we need to do, that were very fundamental in the very beginning discussions about how we were designing this moving forward. There's nothing else on this list that jumps out to me in that policy context to the extent that the power lines do. But I see that as a red flag where it goes from project management very much to the principal priorities. So I'm going to turn to Noel and ask, what is it that you need from us tonight?
Which serves as a segue back to where you wanted to be 15 minutes ago, but council really wanted to weigh in on this. Before you go though, I do want to make a comment and that is simply this. You know, you're hearing council frustration and I think that's pretty common or well shared here. Be clear, it's not frustration directed at staff, it's directed at the situation that we find ourselves in as a result of misbidding by our architect. And you are in the difficult and unenviable position of trying to make lemonade out of some lemons that you've been dealt. So I want to say thank you for doing that. You're in a tough spot and you, you know, carry forward here. Don't take this as frustration directed at you. It's one that we have and will, probably is not going to go away right away, but it's not a staff-directed frustration. So with that, the hope was we'd get to the point where you could give us a sense of where you'd like to go and why. And that's, I think, the moment we've reached is we've all sort of spent our ire. And can you please give us a sense of what the game plan you'd propose is? If I could respond to Councilor Blight's concern about knowing how things are really going as we move forward, I'd suggest that every, every council update, actually we're planning to do it every other week, sort of wrap up of how construction's going, we could just measure how we're doing against a target of $100,000. So you would know from report update to update where we're at.
And I do, because you raised a very good question and it's one that came up with council members before tonight's meeting as well, and that is the question of the undergrounding. And I do think, I do think that is one where I think staff could benefit from some direction from council. As articulated earlier, we set out with about $100,000 target based on budget constraints. And because, at least, you know, by and large, maybe the HVAC system components are an exception, we don't believe we have a gold-plated facility or, we didn't have a lot of bells and whistles to cut off of this thing. So to get to $100,000, what the team has found is you have to get to things like undergrounding if you really want to probably get to that kind of level. Now, the fire chief will tell you, and I'll tell you as well, that, you know, we think it would be better to underground. There's a serious safety question there that can be resolved if we keep the undergrounding in the project. So it's one where I think there is, there is room for a policy weigh-in and I think it would be helpful to staff if you weighed in on that, because I know it's important to a number of you. And then from there, I think what would benefit us is just, you know, the motion tonight is pretty simple. It just, basically, you asked us to seek cost savings and then we will, we don't have to identify tonight if we have costs to fill over time, whether those are going to come from general fund or we, or even beautification fund. That question, we don't need to answer tonight. That can be answered later. Hopefully, we don't even have to get to that question. There is a, over $300,000 contingency budget built into this project. And right now, that would be sufficient, barring other unforeseen circumstances coming up during the project, to cover the $108,000 gap that we have between the budget strategy that you and the finance director identified at the last meeting. So it may be that we don't even have to visit that question yet, but what we could benefit from tonight is, one, knowing council's rule on undergrounding, and then, two, just your concurrence in us moving ahead, trying to find cost savings and moving ahead, knowing that if we do have that bridge to fill because of the high bids, that that, there's just support to fill that without further cost reduction.
So with that, I'm going to ask, I'm just going to supersede you guys for a moment here, because there's been a little bit of conflicting information. As Tana pointed out, it was viewed early on as if we didn't underground, our firefighters couldn't get out. What we heard today was, well, maybe that's not correct. And Chris, can you, if you would, just give us a, where lies the answer we should rely upon with respect to how, what happens if we keep the power, the power lines up there and they go down?
Okay, for the record, Chris Tubbs, fire chief. The standard rule is when you have downed power lines, that you should not drive over them. I mean, if you, you know, you go to any of our utilities websites, they'll say that straight out. There is some discussion within our industry that if the voltage is 220 or 120, that in theory, could a vehicle drive over because the insulated value of the tires? Yes, that's, that's a possibility. But there's a risk that goes with that. Additionally, what is probably of more concern to me is that there's no guarantee that those wires are going to go all the way to the ground. So if they are partially dangling or partially blocking, then the vehicles cannot get out, even, you know, if the wires are dead. So there's a risk there. And so in my discussions with our team and with Noel, my recommendation is that we do the undergrounding. But I understand that that's a policy question for the council and I think that's one of the reasons that we left that on the list, that we think this is important enough to discuss.
Okay.
I have a question on the chief. Yeah, go ahead. The lines, I'm having a hard time visualizing lines. There are no lines that cross in front of the fire station.
Yes, there are.
Are, those are the lines you're talking about?
Yeah, power lines, correct.
Okay. So the lines that we are talking about bearing are the ones that are in front of the fire station?
Correct. They're parallel on 68, right across the front of the fire station.
Dan. Yeah, I, I think that to listen to the discussion, there's probably not unanimity, closing unanimity on the council about the undergrounding. That we, particularly after the remark you just made, it's going to be hard for us to sit here and say, no, we shouldn't underground the power lines and have our firefighters sitting there watching lines in front of their windshield and they can't go through them. What I'm, what I'm more concerned about is what exactly direction that we're giving staff right now. As Chip mentioned, there's $310,000 construction contingency. To me, the termination of how good a job staff and Miller Hall does on this is how little of that contingency you end up using. Because if we can avoid taking the lion's share of that, then this whole problem goes away and we even recover a fair chunk of the 154 that we took out of the bond, the tax receipts for 2013 from this levy. And we got to remember that the cost of having done that was that we deprived ourselves of money for fire equipment replacement. So, yeah, from my standpoint, what I'm going to be looking for in the next year is not that you got to this $100,000 number, I'm going to be looking to how much, it'd be great if you get to $100,000, it'd be great if you got more than $100,000, but the big game in this one is going to be what you can do with the 310 and how much you can ensure that we keep of that. And, you know, as Bruce said, we're not sitting here to take tasks, to take staff to the woodshed. But I will tell you that what I expect you to do is do your utmost to make sure that we don't spend that 310. And I also expect you to do your utmost to make sure that Miller Hall fully understands that we are not happy. And, you know, it just boggles the mind to me that we can hire an architect, which one is, is one of the most experienced architects in the public sector, and they, they end up specifying a military-grade, single-source system. And I just sit there and wonder, what in the world is going on that they could do that? And, and someone has to say to them, you guys screwed up. And, you know, there's a cost to screwing up. And so, I mean, you really need to hold their feet to the fire. If I recall correctly, their soft costs in this project are always significantly higher than what the original estimate was for soft costs. And so, and it's really going to be critical that you make sure Miller Hall is kept in check and is reminded again and again that they got us into this mess. You know, Mike's question earlier on is, you know, when Miller Hall writes something that says, you know, we told you to spend $30,000 for no purpose, and they write it themselves, that's amazing. I mean, it's absolutely amazing that they would put that in a piece of paper. And then someone has to say to them, this is unacceptable. So that, to me, is what, what I'm expecting staff to do and what I will measure the performance of staff on this project, is making sure Miller Hall is kept in check, not using their 310 and as much as possible, and saving $100,000, $150,000, $75,000, whatever it is, you know, save what's prudent.
Okay, so, I mean, Dan, amongst your ire, you've said essentially what you'd suggest the council do is back up and really leave this entirely in the staff's wheelhouse to sort out how to work with this pot of money.
Can I ask deputy mayor a question of what he... So, Dan, are you saying that we go forward limiting to the contingency, the project contingency fund? Limiting additional funds strictly from the project contingency fund?
Well, I mean, if we don't, if by some miracle we don't use the 310, then we can all, you know, pop the quarks and, because we have no problems whatsoever. Between that contingency and the money we saved on the fire truck, the rescue truck, we're, we're home free. It's a done deal.
But there's a request here from the staff to use 2013 REIT surplus, which I am very uncomfortable.
They don't, we've already authorized that in the November meeting. And so Chip, Chip needed that authorization in order to feel comfortable going ahead with the contract, which we already said that. And as Chip told Bruce and myself and Noel earlier on, that he doesn't need this motion right now tonight. He's already got the motion. He's not coming to us and asking us to spend the money at this point, because until we know what we're going to end up with in the contingency, this is an academic discussion.
I hate doing academic discussions because...
Well, he wasn't, yeah, I don't, he didn't, he didn't exactly say it was academic. What he said was, he's, that from a financial standpoint, he's got direction already in hand, he would like to have clarity from council around this is 100, you know, a reasonable number for them to be shooting for and should they carry on with that. And then around these specific items like the, like the undergrounding.
So I think, I think we can do a thumbs up or thumbs down on the undergrounding, because staff specifically asked us for policy direction on that.
Yep. So undergrounding, keep it or get rid of it? So keep it is thumbs up.
It should be a thumbs down.
Yeah, I know. Keep the undergrounding, guys, unless you somehow end up with a very different assessment of it, in which case let us know. But for right now, we're, we're saying keep that. I, yeah, I'm just trying to slice this now to a conclusion where we let staff actually, you know, go back to work on this. If you guys want to provide more detailed input, we can go there or if you...
I think it's just a final statement to Chief Tubbs, and that is, at the end of the day, this building is about public safety. It's for the community, it's for the firefighters who work there, and obviously even beyond Mercer Island, the extent to which it is truly an integrated web. And I, I want you to feel confident that if there is on the table a compromise to a core principle of safety, that among staff, you can express that opinion or come back to council and let us know and hopefully support you in that, because what I would feel very sorry for is if at the end, we somehow found that $30,000 was more important than a critical safety component for this facility and the staff that works there. So just a very important statement on my part.
Jane, you have something?
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, I welcome the motion.
I would like to move to direct staff to seek at least $100,000 in construction cost savings during the project, with the balance of the budget shortfall being funded by surplus REIT excise tax and/or general fund revenues from 2013.
Second.
All right. Dan's called it academic, Chip has asked for it. Any more staff comment before we take that to a vote?
A couple of quick things. I know there's definitely concern about hearing about controls that are military grade, but one of the reasons this list is pretty short is because there aren't a lot of big things we can take out of this building. It isn't a gold-plated building. There aren't a lot of places to squeeze money out. And Chip has just emailed from his sick bed, reminding me that if, if, if we're going to go ahead with undergrounding, that $100,000 target's going to be harder to hit.
All right. Tana?
So when we, if we direct staff to seek, so sure, we can say, you know, directly to seek $250,000, you know, and if you don't find it, so be it. Is that what we're saying?
This is a soft.
This is a soft. So I'm not sure yet how I feel about that, because I, just from what you said, you know, the... what you said, you know, the obvious of if we're taking off undergrounding, which is, what, $40,000, then we're down to $60,000 of, you know, any easily identifiable cost savings. So, you know, as you go through and you find that you don't need quite as much concrete as you thought, or whatever the materials are, and you have savings, great. But if not, I don't want to, you know, I don't even have to come back and say, oh, I failed at meeting the $100,000, when we already know that we're not there yet. Or that would be hard to meet. So, I'm not sure I want to set the staff up to not meet this goal, understanding that we want to take out the undergrounding.
Did that motion...
Second. It did. Noel, I see you nodding. Can you help us with what you would like to see us do in terms of...
I do not believe this was an academic exercise.
No.
At all. I think this was very, it was frustrating, I understand, and I apologize for some of that. But it was helpful to staff, and I think it's good for the council. Given that, though, I don't think we actually need a motion voted on tonight. I think knowing about the undergrounding is key to us moving forward. We've committed to providing you with regular updates about where we are in the project and where we are in the project schedule, and we will start doing that. Even later this week, we'll let you know. So I think for now, I think that's, we have what we need to move ahead.
So, were we to table this motion, simply table this motion, you would still feel, I mean, I think you've heard the tenor of council's view on this.
And you would take action at your last meeting, which actually accomplished some of the...
Yeah. Let me clarify. When I said academic exercise, I was referring to the part saying, with the balance of the budget shortfall being funded by surplus. I wasn't saying our discussion was an academic exercise. I was just saying that that part of the motion was academic, because we'd already done it before. So I don't want to belittle the importance of the discussion.
Yeah. Jane, you have something?
Well, I'd just like to say that I think, I mean, I would be happy to move to table this. I think what's clear is that we can't make real specific recommendations on specific items, because everything is still moving. There's, whatever we can do to avoid change orders, cost overruns because of delays, and things like that will be, you know, all to the good. And we do have the contingency. So I think we're directing the staff to do your darndest to save money, underground the utilities. But it's one of those things, it's a combination of, you know, hitting the cost estimates wrong, that was an error, but also the, it is the economic activity is booming, prices are going up. I mean, I'm seeing that myself. So, you know, it's not our fault that this has happened, and we shouldn't beat ourselves up about it. But we should direct the staff to, you know, do your best.
Well, I can't be quite that gracious. We are over, you know, the council is on this team as much as you are, as much as Miller Hall. We are over $394,305. And even more, if you look at the pre-designed nice pamphlet that we were originally presented from Miller Hall. You know, I find it curious that what drove the $100,000 savings on this wasn't necessarily a top-to-bottom review of all the systems, what were gold-plated, what could have been more efficient design, et cetera, et cetera. But it was that after we incorporate the levy lid, $154,000, after the fire rescue, $31,000, $100,000, and after the 2013 REIT surplus, $108,000, $100,000 is needed, and we found $100,000 in savings. You know, it's odd that the numbers line up like that. So, I'm very frustrated on this. I think it's becoming more expensive than it needs to be, partly to blame on the council for wanting things that could be less expensive and still not jeopardize the capability mission of the building. And I ask that you go from top to bottom on this and find more savings. There are more savings in this building.
All right. I'm going to suggest we table this motion and decide that we flogged this issue for long enough.
Move to table?
I guess, actually, so, I'm sorry, is it table or withdraw? Is it withdraw? Isn't it round and table?
Well, either one.
I don't really want to, because table actually...
You don't come back and...
...keeps it alive, yeah. So, I'm sorry.
Right. Withdraw.
Withdraw.
And does the...
The maker and the second.
I would like to, I would like to withdraw the motion directing staff to seek $100,000 here.
Does the second have to do something at that point?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Glenn. Thank you, Noel. Thank you, Katie. Does anyone have a break, or you want to launch into the last one? Keep going, Mike says. Everyone else okay? All right, we move to Agenda Bill 4907, Draft 2014 Legislative Priorities. Kirsten, you're welcome.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Kirsten Taylor, Assistant City Manager. At council request, staff has prepared a draft legislative priorities document for your consideration. Four legislative priority areas of interest have been identified. Any additional priorities from council discussion this evening will be incorporated into the final document to return at the next council meeting. I will quickly outline the four draft legislative priorities, leaving most of the time for council discussion and direction. So the first is supporting the Association of Washington Cities' priorities. AWC has asked cities to communicate these issues to their legislators and ask for help during the upcoming legislative session scheduled for January 13th through March 13th. These include restoring local liquor revenue and sharing new marijuana revenue. Priorities also include funding statewide and local transportation needs and options, and reframing from raiding infrastructure funds. The second is related to climate action. Council has already adopted positions against coal trains and in favor of CLU action. The third is related to sister city international diplomacy funds, and would allow cities more latitude in how to fund international exchanges and to host dignitaries from sister cities. And finally, the fourth is to support state legislators in drafting, in the drafting of a bill that would exempt city-maintained email address lists from disclosure under the Public Records Act. As many of you know, this has been a concern for citizens who are part of our city email lists when we've had public record requests for those lists. So there's no formal action scheduled for this evening. Staff is requesting council comments and direction in preparing the final legislative priorities document for council adoption at the January 21st council meeting. Turn it back to you for any comments or questions you have.
I know there are going to be some additions that are going to be proposed here, and so we're launching with those. Jane?
This is not an addition, this is a deletion. Suggested deletion of number three. It turns out that Sound Cities is not putting forth that policy position. They had a discussion, they took a vote, there is support for it, but they felt that they are not the body that should bring this idea to the legislature. They feel it should be part of AWC's mission at some point. So they tabled their proposal. So I think we should eliminate that.
And AWC doesn't have it on their agenda, so...
No, and it was a table, so it could come back. And so, I think...
All right.
Yeah.
Let's do thumbs up, thumbs down on that one, and then we'll just keep taking these one by one.
Just a quick question.
Discussion on it.
Yeah. Just a quick question. If we moved the connection to Sound Cities, is that, I mean, you were excited about this policy. So if we remove the language that refers to the Sound Cities supporting this legislation, and we just supported ourselves, is that of interest?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't particularly propose that, no. Not by ourselves, no.
Any comments on this one before I ask for thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay. Those in favor of keeping it are thumbs up, those in favor of getting rid of it are thumbs down. So who wants to, okay. Axe that one, off with it, Sid.
Okay.
Other, Dan, I know you have a couple.
Yeah, there are two of them I would like to add. One is the support of the gun purchase background check initiative. The legislature has to decide whether or not to enact that or let it go to the voters. And I would urge the city to go on record as asking legislators to actually enact it. The second thing is, and I've been told I'm channeling Mike Grady, which is truly scary. But I, ever since he raised the issue, I believe he raised it of driverless electric cars being in the future, and starting to read a little bit about it, realizing this is more than just a fantasy, but this is a reality, it has intrigued me that I could see that happening in Island Crest Way someday. But I also understand that they are now prohibited under state law. I would love to see the city go on record as encouraging, as having the legislature authorize DOT to enter into pilot project agreements with municipalities to, where they could test these cars. And DOT would have to set whatever requirements are deemed appropriate. But just have authorizing legislation that would enable this to someday happen. And if it does get passed, that maybe Mercer Island could one day apply to be a pilot city, or something like this. I think it's intriguing, and it's, and it may ultimately address some of the problems we have with commuter parking, and help us get through that. So I would like to add that to our list, both of us.
Okay, so let's take this one with time. First one was, can you speak more specifically than...
Is it 394 or 594? Initiative 594, the enactment into law of Initiative 594.
Any discussion on that before we...
Yeah. I don't know what 594, what is it?
The gun purchase back...
Yeah, I know, but there's always details. I haven't read that, but I would be comfortable if you said just something without referencing that bill. But if you just said something to the effect of support background checks, gun purchasing background checks. Like I said, I haven't had a chance to look at the details, and there's always some ambushes on those things, the way that they write them and everything. You know, Tana?
She knows.
I'll pump time with that.
Okay. So with even our great leading guy saying he would be supportive of that, I'm guessing we're going to get support for that. But, and Dan saying he doesn't mind that alteration to it. So, everybody else okay with that? So if we say yeah to that, that's going to get, okay, we're good with that. If you have questions about what the language actually is, you'll have to...
I've also enlisted Ally to help.
All right, very good.
Write it down. So between the two of us and any recordings. And I was just going to be very short. It's just to support gun purchasing background checks legislation? Is that enough?
Mandatory background, yeah, gun purchase mandatory background check.
Mandatory.
Okay. And then the second is this idea of driverless vehicles, legislation that would begin to move that towards reality.
Pilot project legislation.
Mm-hmm.
Any comments, discussion on that before?
You might want to engage Marshall on that. It's my understanding that the other, there are other states that are so far ahead of that, and especially, you know, the private companies that are engaged in that, they're not interested in a Mercer Island. They're not interested in other communities to test it out. They've already got it, and they're already working on it. But the more cars...
That's all right with me, I guess. Driverless bicycles.
But I'm just saying, there's the bigger conflict in that, there's already a lot of work, they're already down that road. And how realistic it is that they're going to disengage from that and look at our ideal community, I don't know.
Good. Debbie?
I think the whole thing's fascinating, and I think, you know, there's going to come a point, at least in my mind, in the next six months, when it becomes, at least from a Mercer Island perspective, looking out, about how we become more creative at addressing some of the transportation problems that we have, both as an island, but also as part of a complex region. I support it, but I also appreciate Mike's perspective that there's probably a number of factors, many of them being in what may or may not be legislatively available. So the extent to which you, Andrew, myself, and Dan, or other interested people could look and frame this in a way that we feel that we could meaningfully move it forward from a Mercer Island perspective, I'd be very excited to pursue that. And maybe that means bringing in Steve, maybe it brings in Mike Grady. Because I assume that we don't have to have this wordsmithed to perfection in the next two weeks.
We're trying to give some rough direction here, I think.
Yeah. No, I think it's very exciting. I support it.
Okay. Mike?
Next.
Okay, so, everybody okay, or enough of us okay to be in a majority with, okay, so that's a go as well? Mike, you got one?
We've got to have something on here about paying for 520.
I was going to say the same thing. It's the, it's the elephant in the room, and we haven't mentioned it. But I was going to say, support a transportation package that includes funding for 520.
On two aspects. Pay, the revenue, you've got the revenue aspect of it, and the more efficient employment of transportation dollars. And that's from, you know, whether it's exempting transportation, especially the 520 project, from sales tax, or some of the majority coalition caucus things. But we can be, you can wordsmith it general enough to where you talk about revenue, non-tolling revenue, and also, on the other side of the equation, efficiencies.
Yes, you can. I won't support a version that takes that next step right now, but others may. So, fair enough to key that up, and let's see if it...
Let me ask you, Mr. Mayor, what, I'm not, I'm not, in particular, on not being civic on what I'm suggesting.
But you're delving directly into the debate that's going on betwixt the House Dees and the majority coalition senators, right? And I think, from my perspective, it's enough to say, get a deal done that pays for 520 without using tolling revenue. I don't, I don't care the way into what the deal looks like beyond that. Get a deal done. That's my personal view on that. Where others land, if, maybe one's the, is the view of the council. I'm perfectly happy to, that's where we go.
Let me suggest to the council, I see three areas on getting over this challenge that the whole council has, that the island has. One is the revenue side, the revenue discussion. Two is improving the efficiency of WashDOT, if you will, and how they distribute or collect funds. And then the third would be the design on not mitigating parts of 520, but the other mitigating parts. Because it's the mitigating stuff that you can't change. What do you call, what am I, what's the word that I'm looking for? Well, you have two, you know, all those, all the elaborate expenses that are going on on the west side. Part of it are things that are dictated to mitigate the effect of 520. And there are other projects that are driving up the cost of that project that aren't mitigating. They're just there because of the powers-to-be, maybe. So, put that together there, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thanks for that. Well, help me out, folks, with whether you're looking for a simple statement or a... Well, help me out, folks, with whether you're looking for a simple statement or a statement that tends a little bit more in the direction Mike wants to go. I see Tana and then I'll go to Benson and then back to Jane, okay?
I think truly for the benefit of Mercer Island, having a value neutral position that we just want no tolling of I-90 and yet paid for 520 will be a better, strike a better balance and find more allies in the legislature than having one that includes number two and number three that Mike mentioned.
Benson?
I think, you know, for purposes of what we're trying to do tonight, it's just basically to set out legislative priorities. I think the best way to do that is to be more general. So I prefer the approach that you suggested, Mayor. And, you know, leave the details out at this point.
Jane?
Well, I would certainly support the general statement, support transportation package that pays fully for 520 without using tolling revenue. But I can see, I mean, I think government should attempt to be efficient and cost effective. And so, you know, adding an adjective, support cost effective transportation package, doesn't get into the nuances of the two and three that Mike brought up, but, you know, cost effective, why not?
I would be, I'd be fine with Jane's proposed language.
Yeah, I mean, it sort of gets at what Mike's talking about, but without the political controversy.
Everybody else okay with that? I see Mike's okay with that. Dan, you ready? Okay, so Kirsten, I'll leave you to wordsmith that.
I will, thank you.
Other items, Mike?
The last one, the PRA one. So this kind of a question, this is of such importance. Do we have a disclaimer whenever, have we added the disclaimer whenever a citizen adds their email to the list that it may be releasable under the PRA? Are we doing that? And if not, why not?
I don't know. I don't fund the list, Ross has left. If you'll notice on our email exchanges though, except, well, with the exception of me, because mine are usually privileged, but most of the staff, when they write responses, there is a disclaimer on those responses.
No, that's what I'm going to ask you.
I don't know the answer to that specific question, so I'm not sure, but I'm just saying that in general, our communications do have a disclaimer.
Well, I brought this up a while ago, whenever, is there support on the council to have staff do that on part of a webpage or whenever they sign up for the weekly, that there's a disclaimer on there that says?
Separate. So I think you're headed in a slightly different direction than what's proposed here. And forgive me if I, I'm going to take just a second to talk about how this item came up because I did it. And what happened is Rich and I were at an EWC meeting and I, when we were asked, what are you doing in unique ways to reach out and communicate with your citizens? And we talked about the fact that we were doing this greater email list, but part and parcel with that was, but we were running into trouble with this need to disclose the list to everybody. Toby Nixon happened to be sitting in the room and he said, oh, well, I'd be supportive of an exemption to protect those email lists because at the end of the day, what you're trying to do is have greater transparency in communication with your public, not less. And from his perspective, it's about transparency. So I took that as a sign that this is something that might have some legs and have subsequently talked to Tana and Sound Cities folks. It seems to resonate a bit with people and I don't know whether it's actually going to get anywhere, but I'm hopeful that it will. So that's how it originated and I've nudged it in directions as much as I felt I could without really turning it into a banner that I was carrying forward. But your question, Mike, is a little different and I think we could, we could address that at another time if we chose to, but it's really not the issue of this evening. So, okay, so I've gone on and on. Is any, Mike, you raised, so you raised a separate question, which really is not part of the legislative agenda. So I'm going to move on. Are there any other things that people believe ought to be contemplated as part of the legislative agenda over the weeks? Okay. I think, Dan, you have some?
So procedural question. So what this now says is you're going to come back to us in two weeks. Legislature convenes, what, in?
Next week, 13th.
And it's just a very short session, a two-month session.
I mean, realistically, I think we're done.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you need to come back to us. I think you've got direction, just write it up and, but that's the second part of my question and I don't know if it's for you, Kirsten, or for Noel, or what are you going to do with it? I mean, so we've got this list of legislative priorities. Are we going, is Al Aldrich going to take this around or what's the intent?
I think the first answer is we're going to supply it to our legislators. With a nice letter on top of it saying, there are the priorities of Mercer Island City Council and we would urge you to take action on our behalf. I'm not sure that we go to Al, since we've got a pretty tight scope for him around just one topic. Noel, would you add?
No, I was just considering, there's discussion about that. And we, right now, we just have Al engaged on I-90 issues and at this point, we aren't proposing to increase his scope. But what this does do is something that you haven't necessarily had before, which is that it gives you some authorization as council members to have discussions with legislators about the city's position on these issues. We don't have at this point a planned active lobbying campaign around this agenda.
So let's ask one of the legislators, what does a legislator see as the appropriate way to move this forward?
I think it would be great, as you said, to send it to your legislators, a memo, you know, from the city council. I think if you invited them to speak, if they could, or to come and speak to them or if people wanted to go down, if the mayor wanted to come down and have meetings with the legislators and present it in person with manager treat, if that, you know, if that arose, would be a great way to carry it forward too. And on that, if I can actually just propose one more.
Sure.
Given the value of education on the island, I would love to see us have a line in there talking about fully funding basic education and fulfilling the McCleary decision. It's not going to, you know, nothing's going to change this legislative session, but again, I think this does reflect our values and I think Mercer Island definitely values education. So I'd like to see that on here.
Okay. Any discussion on that one? Okay. With that, I think we are completed on this item. Thank you very much.
Just to confirm, we're not writing it back?
Not writing it back.
But I think we've got, I think we understand your direction and we'll.
It would be good if, I guess the next step is you're going to be paralegal for Bruce to sign, so.
Yes.
Provide a copy of that to the entire council after it's gone and so we have.
Would it be appropriate to ask our state legislators to respond to us at some point, you know, as far as whether or not they were able to advance the agenda?
I think oftentimes I recall from last year that, you know, at some point after the session, the councils invited legislators to come and speak and discuss their.
It's essentially a deep reef.
A deep reef, so I think that'd be a great, I'd be able to continue.
They can address specifically our agenda.
It's a nice way to tie it back together. All right, we move to other business. Thank you, Kirsten. Councilmember absences, there are none tonight, of course. Are there any upcoming that we should be aware of? We will come to this question of absences if we have to maintain the schedule we've got, but we're not there yet. Okay, none upcoming, planning schedule. Noel, you want to talk about what we've got here?
Yeah, we've continued to fill out some of the future meetings. One very important thing I want to note for everyone, it's not on here, but it will be scheduled, and that is the January 21st meeting, we will have a study session that night, which will include sound transit, metro transit and WashDOT. They will all be here. It's sort of a long overdue follow-up to the part of the presentation they gave over a year ago, talking about planning for the RAA project, the link light rail, construction duration and some bus turnaround issues that have been recently proposed. So they'll be briefing us on where they stand with all of those items. That will then lead us to a discussion at our planning session the weekend after that, where we can talk in more detail about those transportation issues.
Can you really talk to them about the presentation? Because what they'll do is they will spend 30 minutes explaining the history of that thing and then we'll have a minute. So tell them, figure out, tee up the questions that we want them to tell, to address and tell them to cut right to the chase. We don't want 30 minutes telling us things that we already know.
Yeah, and FYI, given the broad scope of issues here, the tentative plan is to have a study session that runs for two hours, starting at 6:00 and going to 8:00, and then start the regular meeting at 8:00, so that we avoid exactly what you're talking about, which is something where they talk for 30 minutes and we've got 10 or 15 left. It's not enough time for us to do what we need to do, I think. And I'm imagining splitting that evening into a sound transit metro portion and a WashDOT sound transit portion, so that we can address the groups of issues that belong to both of those agencies or all of those agencies. The one that I'm kind of right now is that sound transit's backpedaling just a little bit on wanting to do it. Noel's got to sort that out. So that's where we are at the moment on that. But I anticipate that our next meeting is a 6 o'clock meeting with an extended study session.
And that's on the weekend, is that like Tuesday?
So it's Tuesday, yes. We have a planning session the following weekend. Noel has been working hard to try and get me to sign off on calling it Saturday only and thank you all for not responding with a whole bunch of other issues you wanted to talk about. It looks like it could be, but I have insisted that we keep Sunday on the agenda so that if issues do arise, we haven't cut ourselves short prematurely. So I would say please keep Sunday open, but anticipate that if we're brisk about it, it's possible that it collapses to, there will be Friday, there will be Saturday. The question is whether we have to be back on Sunday or not.
I noticed that Sunday started at 9:00.
Let's call Sunday, you know, kind of play it by ear for now. So, okay, I can, maybe at this point, I'll raise this question, I raised an email to each of you, which is the February 18th meeting and the April 7th meeting both fall on school holidays. And my family has vacations planned for both of those weeks. I raise the possibility of, if I have to miss meetings, that's fine. If that's where the role of the council lies, I'll take my lumps and miss the meetings. But it would be my preference to move the February 18th meeting a week later to the 24th, if that works for folks. The April 7th meeting is more complicated. If you move it a week later, it falls under the first day of Passover, Dan points out. If you move it a week earlier, Dan's in Europe and misses it. So there's no simple solution on that one. But let's talk February 18th first. Is moving to the 24th an option for folks for that? And is it preferable or is it just a pain?
I gave you an email.
You gave me an email and I think your email said that the 24th worked okay for you. I believe so.
There were a couple that worked.
I can try and get to that, but any other input on those?
It works for me.
It'll take me a minute, Mike, to get to that. Okay, so let's assume, let's see, there it is. Mike, you said the 24th worked, so February 24th works for you. It sounds like it works for others too. So let's assume the 24th, Noel, for the February meeting, the second February meeting. And as far as the April 7th meeting, what's the, what are your feelings on that? Do you prefer to move it? Okay. Tyler, you anticipate that too? Dan, you?
Yeah, I can.
You can go either way. All right. Okay, let's assume it's moved.
To the 31st.
To the 31st. Mike, Sarah, you?
31st.
Okay. I'm sorry, no, 31st. You said works. Okay.
31st of Jan.
31st of March.
Of March.
And that actually works. It's March as well as extended extra week months and so it actually keeps us on a reasonable schedule. All right. Thank you for that.
Thank you for looking in the face.
Yeah. Board appointments, we have them, but at this point, it's, now I can move forward getting input on board appointments. We realized, Dan and Noel and I were talking today, that we've got several different things cooking right now that might mean more assignments for folks. This town center stuff that we're talking about and where we are on this transportation issue. So what we're going to do is meet Thursday and talk a little bit more about a proposed structure of boards and then seek the input from you as to what you'd like to serve on and then try and get that signed up. Okay? So beginning a thought, but hold for the moment, probably end of this week, I'll send out something saying, okay, here's what I see as the range of options. Please give me your input as to where you'd like to land and then I'll go to work on that. Councilmember reports. Benson, you want to go first?
I'll defer.
All right, well, welcome to the council, of course. Debbie? Jane?
Brief Arts Council report, their December 11th meeting, they elected the chair and vice chair, Jane Ditzler and Paulette Buffano. They're getting ready to send out requests for sponsors for the Mostly Music in the Park series. There'll be five Thursday night concerts and two Sunday night concerts. There was an ETP meeting on December 13th. It was pretty routine with reports, but thanks to Mike, all the members received a condensed version of the letter that went out from our.
Yeah, I think you should have cut that down.
From Bill Chapman, the big long letter. And Katie prepared a very good summary letter and it went out to everyone on the ETP group and many of them asked for a link to the long version of the letter. So also just a reminder, there's a meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, 6:30 to 8:00 at Mercer Island Library about the plans for the remodel of the library. So I'm going to miss that meeting, but I hope someone on the council can make it.
What time is it?
6:30 to 8:00. Hearing reports about how the remodel would go forward, so.
At the library?
At the library.
Okay. Dan?
Two things. First, at the end of the meeting, there's some cake in the back room for people who would like to indulge. Secondly, I went down to the swearing in ceremony down at the city of Seattle.
Okay, this is the.
Yeah. You know, it was like being back in the 60s. I mean, I consider myself relatively liberal, but I can't hold the candle to what's going on in Seattle right now. And when the new council member, so on, got up and put her fist up like this and then talked about evils of capitalism and corporations and how we need a new political party and it's like, and how the rest of the city council is just saying, you know, where do we sign up? It is, it's an amazing thing going on in Seattle and it's, it's something that we're going to need to be cognizant of because, I mean, you've got a, I mean, we thought McGinn was quite liberal, but I think Murray's going to outliber McGinn. And Murray is, yeah, Murray was sitting there in his speech saying that he realizes Seattle needs to engage with its regional partners and, and I think it's going to be important that we establish some relationships with this group. Because right now, they've got an agenda and I, my guess is that I-90 tolling is pretty far down under a jack and they're, they're going to do a $15 minimum wage, there's no question in my mind. That'll be passed in Seattle within the next three months and plus whatever else, I mean, there'll be other stuff coming. And it's going to be a very aggressive legislative agenda in Seattle for the next, for the foreseeable future.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Tyler?
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to mention a couple of things.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention a couple things. One, just wanted to thank... I wanted our council to thank Representative Judy Cleburne, because she really worked so hard on this, been working so hard on the transportation negotiations. And right now, while it's kind of dormant, the I-90... There are no tolls on I-90 in there. That's as far as they've gotten in the negotiations to include not having that. And that really is a great thing for Mercer Island. Of course, it hasn't been agreed to, so there's nothing set in stone, but it's in a good... It was in a good spot when it ended. Where it ends up, I'm not sure, but, you know, I think she's really put in so many hours and really done a great job on it. I also wanted to mention, I was down in Olympia today, and in the lobby of the Capitol, there was a life-size whale made out of plastic bags. And it was a whole display of the damage plastic bags can do to ocean life, so I thought you would all get a take out of that. I'm happy to share photos, because I took some. I also wanted just to mention, I'm excited I'm on three committees down in Olympia, early learning human services, the environment, and capital budget, so that'd be great. I think it agriculture, amazing. And then lastly, I think I don't want this evening to pass by without really welcoming Benson, you know, wholeheartedly, and I think it's a... It's wonderful to have you individually, and obviously, your talents already are coming into play. And I think it's exciting for Mercer Island. We have a much more representative council than we did three years ago, and I think I look forward to continuing in the vein of representing the people of Mercer Island. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Mike? Just to reiterate what Jane said, thank you, Katie and Noel, for preparing that cover letter for ETP, and thank you, Jane, for presenting that to ETP and getting it distributed.
Yeah, good idea. I don't have much. I can report that I got to watch the deputy mayor do the tango the other night at his retirement party. Along with a couple of you. Beyond that, no, it's been the holidays. It's been the holidays. Okay, with that, unless there's anything else, we are adjourned. Thank you all.